We convene, and I would like to make the following disclosure by a four to zero vote, with Councilmember Spees absent. The City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the cases of Rogers v. County of Sacramento and all, and Teodoro Tristan v. City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:07 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March the 13th, 2024. It is 6:07 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays will be on Friday, March 15th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, March 17th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovescity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide to Assistant City Clerk Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor. And with that, I’ll be moving on to the roll call. And for the roll call, I’ll be starting with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
I’ll note that Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
And we have four members.
And for the record, I would like to note that Councilmember Spees is out of town for works, so he wanted to make sure that you all knew that. Thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would the Vice Mayor please read our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove’s first inhabitants, the Plains Mewoc, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right. Thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. Would Councilmember Robles please lead us?
Hand over your heart. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, the first item being Item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring March as Women’s History Month. I would just like to make a note, Mayor, and Councilmembers, that we do have a member of the public that has requested to sign up to speak on both of the proclamation items, so it be at the discretion of the Council if you’d want to field those comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I read the proclamation, I will go ahead and call up Mr. Monawski if you would like to come up now or after I read the proclamation. Sir? Oh. Do you have a preference now or after I read the proclamation?
Go ahead.
Okay. Very good. We’ll do it afterwards. All right. I would like to call up at this time Raquel Williams, the Vice Chairwoman of the Wilton Rancherias Tribal Council. If you would come forward, and feel free to bring your family if you like as well. All right. Proclamation, Women’s History Month, March 2024. Whereas March was officially designated as Women’s History Month in 1987, and whereas the purpose of Women’s History Month is to honor and celebrate the contributions of women throughout history, and whereas women have played critical roles in history and continue to serve as leaders, securing women’s rights and creating a fair and just society for all, and whereas Raquel Williams started her political career when she was elected to Wilton Rancherias Tribal Council in 2020, and subsequently was elected as Vice Chairwoman in 2022, a position she currently holds, and whereas Raquel has been involved in her culture, ceremonies, and celebrations from a young age, her love for her family, people, and culture is evident in all aspects of her life, and whereas Vice Chairwoman Williams believes that to gain clarity about the future, we should honor the past. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims March 2024 as Women’s History Month in the City of Elk Grove, and we appreciate Vice Chairwoman Raquel Williams for her commitment to the community and our city. Congratulations.
When you said, when you were reading, and I said 1987, those years was born, so it’s not, it’s not that long, you know? So on behalf of the tribe, on behalf of our nation, on behalf of Indigenous women, women of color, and also just the, just that role that we play as pillars in our communities and pillars of our family, I want to say thank you. And I know to some it might just be a piece of paper or a nicely framed, nicely framed letter, but at the same time, the strides that Elk Grove is making is beautiful. And for us to sit here with my family, and for us to hear the land acknowledgement being done at the beginning of the City Council meeting, it’s all those works, right? And we honor you guys for that. So I want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to the women that can’t be here. Thank you to our lost and loved ones, but also too, thank you to the women that brought you guys here today and that helped raise you guys and shaped and mold you guys for the betterment of my community. So thank you. I honor the works that you do. Meet Wila Dukma.
Thank you so much. We’ll come join you down there. to the City of Elk Grove. Just with the tribe and your specific work, it’s just tremendous, and we just can’t be more, you know, we’re not, we’re grateful to you, we’re indebted to you, and thank you again for working with us, for developing our land acknowledgement, long overdue, but we sincerely appreciate the friendship and the partnership. Thank you. All right. Mr. Monawski.
If it was a real land acknowledgement, you’d just give the land back. In the Sacramento Bee, last August, Sky River Casino marked its first anniversary, and here’s what it means for the city and the tribe. For the city, it means a 300-room hotel, and it means $4 million a year in payments, in addition to some other things. For the tribe, this is a quote from Raquel Williams. She said she has a pretty good idea of what it means. “It’s a dream decades in the making. It’s a casino, a business,” Williams said, but also shows what we can, also shows what we can, that we can take care of our own. This presentation confabulates, I mean, it’s one thing to give Ms. Williams an acknowledgement, and I’m not, not saying I’m not in favor of that. However, it’s, I think it does disrespect women generally, because most women do not have $4 million in a revenue flow to the city. Most women don’t have the offer of building a 300-room hotel based on capital from the Hughes Corporation. And it seems to me that women’s history and women’s, if we’re to really recognize women, we’re to recognize them as they were in the song by John Lennon. Women are the N-word of the world. The women do not get respect. Women in this country right now face all kinds of barriers and problems to healthcare, to childcare, to their own health and safety. And I disagree with this kind of glad-handing that the city does. All the hugs and kisses and everything, fine, you can do that, but please do it as recognition of the tribe or a recognition of the, of the individual, but not of Women’s History Month. I think, you know, I have three daughters and a wife, and they don’t, they don’t agree with this. And I can say that very, very carefully, very sure with great certainty. I think most people who struggle in the world and have to put food on the table and take care of children, and of the burden, the greatest burden of which is taken by women, would disagree with this kind of action.
All right. Thank you for your three minutes. Next up is our proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month, and assisting will be Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Jamie Brown in the audience?
No, but.
I think we’d invite, come on up, Red Cross.
Please, come on up, both of you, yes. What are your names?
Representatives from American Red Cross.
Yes.
Wonderful.
All right. Fantastic. Well, it’s my honor to recognize this critical organization that, not only in times of war, but natural disasters like earthquakes, forest fires, and hurricanes, really does a lot to help a community heal and get through the disaster. And so, we have here a proclamation recognizing American Red Cross Month for March 2024. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Elk Grove and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country’s history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering, and whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton’s commitment as they step up through the Red Cross in the California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for the neighbor, our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a lifesaving difference in people’s darkest hours, whether it’s delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas, we hereby recognize them this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims March 2024 as American Red Cross Month, encouraging all residents of Elk Grove to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you very much for being here.
Would you like to say something before we come down?
Yeah, just real, real briefly, this is Mike Alau. My name’s Mark Montgomery. We’re both locals. I’ve lived in Elk Grove for about 25 years now, actually older than the City of Elk Grove, it looks like. You know, we’ve, I’ve been a volunteer for the Red Cross for about two years now, and I’m really, really impressed on, on the organization and how it helps people in their times of need in a lot of different ways. So I’m, I’m very thankful on behalf of the Red Cross for the City of Elk Grove’s support of the Red Cross. We are always looking for volunteers. We’ve left some materials, of course, to, for, for anyone that may be interested in helping us out down the road. So again, thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you for all the tremendous work that you do, not only in our city, but all cities. Will come down and join you? Thank you.
Thank you for your services.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you guys do for our veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Are you ready? One, two, three. One more for good measure. One, two, three. Thank you.
I can no longer hold my breath.
In 2016, NPR and ProPublica reported that the American Red Cross spent a quarter of the money people donated after the 2010 Haiti earthquake, or almost $125 million on its own internal expenses, according to an investigation by Iowa Senator Chuck Grassley. The report also says the charity’s top official stonewalled congressional investigators and relate, and released incomplete information about its Haiti program to the public. It concludes there are substantial and fundamental concerns about the Red Cross as an organization. The report follows nearly a year-long investigation by Grassley and his staff, launched after NPR and ProPublica of the Haiti response by the Red Cross. The venerated charity raised nearly $500 million after the disaster, more than any other nonprofit, but an ambitious plan to build housing resulted in just six permanent homes. According to Reuters, in January this year, the Red Cross must face part of a lawsuit. Massachusetts-based Varax Biomedical, which has a quick test for infections in platelet products, blood products, which are sold by the Red Cross to hospital systems. Anyway, it can move ahead, according to the court, with claims that the Red Cross violated the state unfair competition law. In its lawsuit, Varax alleged the Red Cross, which says it provides about 40% of the country’s blood and blood components, tried to convince customers to switch to the group’s service for pathogen reduction treatment. And the court set a March 11th status conference, which I haven’t been able to, had time to, to look up, but it’s, it’s still going to follow through. I think the glad-handing that happens here is embarrassing. It’s an embarrassment to me, and I think to any understanding, knowing person, you know, don’t you know what’s happening in Haiti right now? Haiti, what the United States did to the American Indian, it did it, at the same time it did it to Haiti. Haiti declared freedom to the slaves, and it marginalized, the United States marginalized Haiti. Haiti is a damned country, damned by the United States. Part of the lawsuit, by the way, is that Red Cross had it both ways. It said it was an instrument of the United States, and in this case it was. Did the same thing, had the same results.
All right. Thank you for your public comments.
And I would, I would just add one more thing. I think the Red Cross volunteers, that they, they’re individuals, and this is not to impugn them.
Sir, your time is up.
It impugns you for doing this kind of glad-handing.
Thank you. Next up is our public comment. First up is Kirk Thompson, followed by Keith Dietrich. Dietrich.
So last year, I informed this council about the pornographic books being purchased by our local school district for the school libraries. Now, that was generally confined to high schools and occasional junior high. Since this was confined to age groups, where information about sex is more socially acceptable, this council decided to stay in their lane and not comment on the controversy. I’m here to inform this council and Elk Grove parents of some recent happenings at Elk Grove area elementary schools. Recently, a UBU or Rainbow Club was discovered to exist at Pleasant Grove Elementary School, where, to my understanding, a teacher went around asking kids as young as eight years old if they’d like to join a club that is for boys who crush on boys and girls who crush on girls. When talking with parents from Pleasant Grove Elementary, I was told by parents that they were not notified, there were no permission slips required to attend, even though gardening club requires permission slip, and some of these students were told not to tell their parents about this club. The school principal was confronted by more than 30 parents who were rightfully upset by this club being formed in secret. Parents found out that this wasn’t an isolated incident and that secret clubs like this potentially exist at up to 10 Elk Grove elementary schools. One parent asked why a permission slip wasn’t required for this club, and the response from a school official was, “We fear there will be parents who will say no.” Yeah, no shit. Not sure how it’s such a shocker that parents might have an objection to strangers having secret conversations with their eight-year-old. Rather than addressing the concerns that parents have about this secret club, the district’s youth development office put together a training for teachers and staff on how to respond to resistance against Rainbow Clubs and GSAs. So the creepy teacher asking third graders what their sexual preferences, that’s not the problem, it’s the parents. The Principal Skinner meme is just so apparent there. Since I don’t expect this council to do or say anything, because several members of the school board are political allies of yours, I want to make an appeal to parents of elementary school kids in Elk Grove. Go to the EGUSD website, and if you don’t already know, find out who your school principal is, find out who the director of elementary education is, find out who the superintendent is, and send them an email asking them about these clubs and why they’re being done in secret. Because even if you approve of these clubs, there is absolutely zero reason why you shouldn’t be able to know all of the information your child consumes at school. It would be nice if we had a school board and a city council who agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith Dietrich, followed by Tina Green.
Now for a bit of good news. So, Keith Dietrich, President/CEO of The Gathering Inn. I am here to praise the heck out of this City Council and its departments for what it has done with the Winter Only Sanctuary. A couple of your departments have actually served meals at the Winter Only Sanctuary, City Manager, and the Strategic Planning and Innovation Department, Public Works, Police Department, Lieutenant Dan Templeton, IT/Finance, Darren Wilson, Development and Housing Department, Good Shepherd Catholic Church, Betty May, St. Luke’s Lutheran Church, I usually don’t read, I’m a little more verbose, but I was told I wasn’t allowed to miss anybody, so. Journey Church, Midtown Church, Creekside Church, Sun Grove Church, Rotary Club of Laguna, Sigma Delta Omega, Dottie LaPage Life Group, Press Law Filipino Group, Lynn and the PTA Moms, Christie Cares, Uplift Elk Grove, Dos Coyotes Restaurant, they do a meal every Thursday of every week. Cafe Elk Grove, the Elk Grove Food Bank, could be more supportive of them. I mean, Marie Chiquino, she’s bent, she’s amazing, one of the best-kept secrets here. Brian, the manager there, Elk Grove Heart, we would be nowhere without them. Diane and Debbie, fantastic people, you know them well. We’ve got a lot of volunteers. Sandra Gomez does men’s haircuts, okay? Michelle Roche does resume building class. I mean, not to mention Sarah with the Department of Housing, she’s been fantastic to work with. Other in-kind donors, Al Meshba Resource Center, just fantastic. I mean, you guys have a great city here. Like, I’ve worked all across the country. This is like at the top, but this is simply at the top. And I want to, I’m gonna, I’m gonna point you out, you knew I was gonna come down here. You didn’t know, but you probably figured out what I called him. So what happened is, he’s at a Raley’s. Last week, 10 days ago, you’re coming out, it’s late at night, it’s raining, you see a person experiencing homelessness, and you go up to him, and you say, “Hey, do you want some shelter tonight?” He might have stunned you, and you said, “Yeah, I do.” And then you did your thing. And you ended up, through all of that, putting this gentleman in your car and driving him to the Winter Only Sanctuary. Hats off to you, dude. Like, you’re amazing. That is, that is community taking care of community. And I wanted to, to point you out for sure about that, because that was, that’s pretty amazing. That’s really cool. And there’s two people that have experienced homelessness with us, and they’re housed, and they have their own blue cards, so they don’t have to take any more time, and they’re gonna come up, Tina and Danny, they’re gonna come up and tell you a little bit, okay? You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, Keith. Tina Green, followed by Danny Snyder.
Hi, my name is Tina Green, and I was a resident at The Gathering Inn, and I just want to thank The Gathering Inn on my experience. I am now housed. I am very happy, and I just want to give a special thanks to The Gathering Inn. I have my own apartment. I just want to thank them for their extra support and their extra, sorry, their extra support and their commitment to helping me. If it wasn’t for them, I wouldn’t be where I’m at today. And I just want to thank them, thank all the staff, all the special support and all the love. Thank you so much. Sorry.
Thank you, Tina. We wish you the best of luck. Wow.
So I was homeless for a period of time. The housing prices got too high for me to afford rent and stuff, and a loss of a job. I found this place, and they took me in and helped me. They gave me food, place to stay, counseling. I mean, it was just the wonderfulst thing. I’m really thankful for the homeless shelter and everything they’ve done for me. I’m housed now, and I know things are looking bright right now, so I’m pretty excited. So I just want to tell everybody thank you for what you guys have done down there.
Wow. Tremendous, tremendous.
I just cut into one minute of this, just one second. I want to mention Christiane. Stand up. That’s our case manager. He’s made it all happen with them, so thank you all very much for what you did.
Thank you. Hard to not shed a tear here. We, we are so proud of you. We want to thank The Gathering Inn, and hearing these success stories, this is what it’s all about. Just thank you, and we wish you the best of luck. Just so proud of the work that’s happening over there. We know there are so many other stories. Thank you. This partnership has been wonderful. Thank you, and congratulations to both of you over there. We are so proud of you. Absolutely.
Keith, thank you for all the work that you’ve been doing for The Gathering Inn. And I called your staff like at 10 o’clock, and I didn’t think anyone was gonna answer.
We always answer.
And yes, that is true. You always answer. I got a call back, and, and you guys rolled out the red carpet, and you made a difference in someone’s life that evening. I asked him, I’m like, “Hey, do you have a tent?” And he’s like, “No, but I have two trash bags.” And...
And I spent a couple minutes looking for him after, after a while. And I remembered the trash bags, and when I looked around the corner, there was two trash bags there. His name was Matthew, I don't know what Matthew's up to, or what's going on, or what's happening. But I remember while driving from Franklin all the way to Elk Grove Boulevard, down Elk Grove Boulevard, I asked questions. I'm just that guy who starts asking questions, right? And I started figuring out who he was and what his life story and what led him to Elk Grove. And thank you just for allowing and providing that bed and for answering that call, especially super late. Thank you for that, I'm really appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to quickly thank The Gathering Inn, Mr. Dietrich, for being here. Congratulations to everyone who's been housed and gone through the program and taken steps forward. But I really also want to just recognize our city staff and team and all the community members that Mr. Dietrich listed. I'm so proud of the city of Elk Grove and its community right now. And to my colleague, Councilmember Robles, thank you so much for showing a heart. We all know it up here, but it's, you know, it's great to see that gesture, very unselfish gesture that you did. So kudos to everybody. Thank you.
Yes. We love you, Sergio, but the Gathering Inn, just thank you, thank you, thank you. You have been a godsend to our city, truly. That concludes our public comment. Thank you for sharing those great, the great statistics. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Since our city manager isn't here, does Kara have an update for us? Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. While our Gathering Inn friends are leaving, I do want to announce that we are extending our enhanced winter sanctuary by one month. This is going to remain open through the end of April. Careful spending has generated a savings for the program, which will help keep the doors open for another month. And by providing this additional time, we hope to empower more individuals to make a smooth transition to stable and secure living, like the stories we heard tonight. So this extension will not impact the construction schedule for the new library. I also want to mention that we're pleased to share that the $460 billion federal spending bill signed into law this month included more than $2.2 million in funding for Elk Grove projects. The three projects include Domestic Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, Zero Emission Vehicle Municipal Infrastructure Project, and the Brewsville Walkability Improvement Project. We'd like to express our gratitude to Senators Butler and Padilla and send a big thanks to Congresswoman Doris Matsui for her advocacy and support of these requests. Starting this Friday, the city is partnering with Dance on the Edge to introduce a monthly Latin night market at District 56 beginning from 5 to 9. These events will offer complimentary dance lessons, vendors, and great music. So we hope you'll join us this Friday. The Youth Commission will host a new youth leadership forum on Thursday, March 21st, from 5:30 to 7 at District 56. This event will offer students a chance to participate in roundtable discussions with city leadership. The event is free, but registration is required. And lastly, we're coming up on the city's State of the City speech on Friday, March 29th, at District 56. Tickets to attend the speech are available for purchase online from the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce website, and the city will livestream the address on the city's website starting at 12:30 PM. I remain available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that update and the news for our winter sanctuary. Any questions or comments from colleagues here? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to our consent calendar items. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity and invite back up Michael Monaski for item 7.4. Is Mike, oh, there he is.
I'm commenting on item 7.4, which the discussion of the item that was written by staff includes this paragraph. "If a conflict's waiver is appropriate and approved by the city to be provided to a law firm, certain safeguards would be established by the law firm to ensure the protection of the city. For instance, law firms are made up of multiple attorneys, and the same attorney within the law firm would not typically represent the city and party adverse to the city in the same matter. Further to this point, an ethical wall is usually established within the law firm in which the confidential files and materials are made inaccessible to the attorneys representing parties with interests adverse to the city. To aid in the efficient operations of the city in its legal representation and to ensure proper protection of the city, staff recommends that the city council jointly delegate conflicts waiver authority to the city manager and the city attorney. Approval of policies like this, waiving the ethical rules, explains why the mayor and the city council do not adhere to the practice of recusal in the face of apparent conflicts of interest. I would think that there would be a certain sensitivity to the kinds of safeguards that should be held in terms of conflicts of interest, especially in light of the fact that we have two presidents, one former, one sitting, that are accused of violating security standards, national security standards. And there seems to me, you know, there's this false game played when you have closed session, sessions that are closed to the public, but not to the law firms, about things like lawsuits that could, that approach 10 millions, tens of billions of dollars. And this ethical wall that's referred to in here and the juggling of attorneys is just unacceptable. It's as if there aren't enough attorneys around. This item 7.4 should not be approved. It is, again, the loosey-goosey attitudes of this mayor and this council that follows in her footsteps in terms of failing to acknowledge and understand and act upon conflicts of interest that are apparent to us.
All right, thank you. I have no further public comments, so I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item 8.1.
And 8.1 was the public hearing for approving amendments to the conditions of approval and subdivision design review for Sheldon Park Estates tentative subdivision map project, but there is a recommendation for this to be continued for the public hearing to the meeting of March 27th.
All right. Do I still need to open up the public comments?
I think we just give the opportunity, if there is anyone that's here in the audience that didn't see the part about this continuing to March 27th, we can open up that opportunity for public comment, but then we'd ask for a motion to move it to the meeting of March 27th.
All right, very good. I don't have anyone signed up, so I'll look for a motion to move the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up is item 9.1.
And that's consider appointment of one voting member to the Sacramento Environmental Commission, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. We opened up a recruitment as of December 2023. We reached out to our current appointee at the time, Mr. Eric Rivera Montez, and he had reported after he'd done three terms of three years each. He had some other obligations and would not be able to continue to serve in his capacity as the city of Elk Grove representative to the Sacramento Environmental Commission. We opened up the recruitment in the new year, and you have two candidates before you, and I believe they're signed up to speak on the item in consideration of their appointment to the commission.
All right, very good. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity and invite Michael Monaski, followed by Eugene Lee.
I'm on follow, Mr. Lee.
You're signed up first, sir, so.
I respect the protocol of the meeting, so.
So Mr. Monaski, you're up.
Well, I already spoke three times.
Well, let's break a record tonight.
Oh, no, no, I've spoken more than this.
Excellent.
Before this body, not this particular group, grouping, but anyway. Norwegian playwright Henrik Ibsen got it right in 1882 when he composed "An Enemy of the People." It's the tale of a doctor who runs the municipal spa and must report it's being poisoned by the tannery run by his father-in-law. His brother is the town judge. He follows the popular will to keep the city's coffers filled with cash from visitors to the spa and to bolster the myth of its healing waters. Ibsen equivocated. He didn't know if the story was a tragedy or a comedy. I suspect it's both. This council mimics the popular sentiment reported in Ibsen's play. Most people neither know nor care to know about just how dangerous social policy and planning can be to their collective health. We're awash in chronic diseases which deprive most of us of happy, healthy, and long lives. Our communities have been planned around slow trips with individual automobiles, which keep us off our feet and apart from each other. Because the burdens of housing and transportation are not shared, these individuated plans create unhealthy stress in our bodies. Ours is not a sharing and caring society. Psychologist Paul Gilbert wrote, "One of the challenges to creating a more compassionate society is to find ways to create the social and economic conditions that regulate, control, and hold strategies and promote caring and sharing. No easy task. I'm here because I submitted a complaint against the yawning pit of deficiencies in the so-called Health Impact Assessment attached to the environmental impact report for the zoo. City clerk informed me of this vacancy, so I applied. The county Public Health Services Department should be recruited, in my opinion, with the planning department drafting environmental reports so that chronic human diseases can be considered. The hold and control policies of consumerism leave us with toxic air, water, and soil, deprive us of shared transit amenities, and debt us to pulling ourselves up by our own bootstraps. It's an unwise way of living that destroys species upon which we depend and will ultimately result in our collective demise." I might add, I don't expect to be appointed by this mayor or this council, but that's my take on human health. I served for three years, appointed to the Public Health Advisory Board of the county, and watched the dismantling of six of the seven existing public health clinics. I don't see much hope for public health.
All right, well, thank you for that. Next up is Eugene Lee.
Good evening. My name is Eugene Lee, and thank you very much for your consideration. I'm a proud District 1 resident, and I'm a parent in Elk Grove. And my story is that I have children that have excelled and successfully graduated from the Elk Grove Unified School District. And right now, they're gainfully employed as in environmental and engineering careers. I am so proud of them. But my story is not unique. Elk Grove is a fine community to raise families. I know that, we know that. But, you know, like our parents example to us. You know, better futures require intentionality and effort. Creating healthy and sustainable communities requires the same intentionality from our local government leadership and our diverse residents and businesses. And that is the reason I have applied to be our Elk Grove representative. I believe in contributing to the work to support a sustainable tomorrow and that it is worthwhile. And I would be proud to use my time and experience to help make that happen and represent the community that I've lived in for 35 years. My environmental work is both professional and personal. Professionally, I have managed at the California Energy Commission to lead energy efficiency, building decarbonization, weatherization, and clean energy equity policies that I'm particularly proud of. I've worked as an energy inspector for an energy nonprofit organization improving homes in Sacramento County. I have literally seen, smelled, and heard poverty in neighborhoods and homes. It is real. And so personally, I am proudly serving now as a city of Elk Grove Climate Ambassador, recently showcased on our current newsletter, to advance our city's climate compass. And I'm serving on as a board treasurer to Sacramento Splash. It's an environmental organization that leads, inspires, and teaches children the natural world, putting down the phone and environmental stewardship and inviting them to think about climate careers. I volunteered with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and I've literally, with teenage girls with Splash, planted nearly 30 native oak trees on White Lock. It was a great experience, and we did it last year right before the rain. So thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. That is our last speaker. So I will close the public comment opportunity. And it would be my extreme pleasure to recommend to this council for consideration, Mr. Eugene Lee, to serve as the Sacramento, on the Sacramento Environmental Commission. You bring a wealth of experience and knowledge that would be just an amazing voice representing this great city on the commission. So that is the name I bring for your consideration.
I would be happy to second that. I think Mr. Lee articulated all the wealth and experience you just mentioned.
Yes.
And not to mention, he's from District 1.
Now we're about districts.
Well, you know. Just kidding, he represents our city well, yes.
Thank you. We good? Yep, all right, so that.
In fact, I want to thank Mr. Lee for being here tonight. I know he had a conflict, and that conflict was running really close to being here. And we traded off emails, and you kind of know my thing, you got to be here to win. And I'm so happy that you are here to present your case and show your qualifications. Because you, after reading your emails and stuff, it's like, you're the type of individual that we want to have represent the city in regional issues. It helps make us stronger as a city and makes the region stronger as well, so thank you, Mr. Lee.
All right, well, thank you and congratulations, sir.
Yeah.
All right, all right, we will move on to our next item, which is council comments, reports, future agenda items. Councilmember Robles, anything?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Suen.
I had a very short SAC SUE meeting today. That's it, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Monday, we had SAC RT Transit Board Meeting. And we were talking about federal dollars that we received through the recent CR that was signed by the president. Very thankful for that as well. And also talking about the logo and how we're going to shape that and shape RT for the future. So it was a good conversation in a really productive meeting, albeit brief.
All right, thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. I will waive my report. Adjourn the meeting at 6:55 PM. Have a good evening, everyone.